Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Would you please stand? Join Congresswoman, Councilwoman Paget in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pray with me. Our Father in Heaven, we do thank you for our lives. We thank you for our community. We thank you for those that serve this community to make it better. We just want to thank you for them and for their service. We want to thank you, Father, especially today, that during the Easter season, we want to thank you for your Son, who came and died for our sins, and that we are celebrating Resurrection Sunday in a couple of weeks, and we want to thank you for that and for all the promises and the hope that that gives us to give us life. And we want to thank you and praise you for that. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Don. Called to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of March 15th. Second item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Items A through C, which are... Items A is the approval of the last minutes of the Public Works Authority of March 1st. B is the approval of an award bid for grass management. And C is some approval of some budget amendments concerning Public Works Authority Fire Fund, Grant Fund, and Hotel Motel Fund.
So moved.
I will entertain a motion in a second. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Sir, any discussion? Submit your votes, please. See the votes. Unanimous approval by all those in attendance to approve that consent agenda, that being the last item on the agenda. That meeting is adjourned, and we will move into... I call to order our City Council meeting of March 15th. Do we have any public comment notes? Any community announcements? No? Okay. Again, moving to item number three, Consent Agenda. Items A through H. Bear with me. A is the approval of the minutes of March 1st. B is the budget amendment, number five, similar to what we approved in the previous meeting. C is approval of renewal for the sports field use for the Little League use of Kiwanis Field. D is the approval, also renewal, of the sports field use for the Summer Baseball League for the use of Cottonwood Flats. E is renewal of the sports field agreement for the Softball Association use of Owen Field. F is approval of the agreement between the City of Guthrie and Highland Hall, the Logan County Aging Services for their lease. G is approval to allow the purchasing agent to solicit bids for demolition or removal of dilapidated structures. I believe there are six structures on that list. And H is the approval of the Consumer Price Index Amendment to a lease, item number... Or lease number nine at the airport. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve those items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Submit your vote, please. Let's see the votes. Unanimous by all those in attendance to approve the consent agenda. Items A through H. Item number four, Public Hearing and Discussion of Possible Action on Ordinance 3287 concerning a zoning change from R2 to C1. This being a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that would... That wanted to speak to any of those... Of that zoning issue? Okay. I'm... The... My ear... My left ear is burning, too, and the suggestion was to start with you as a presentation.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that the applicant is here. This is rezoning from a residential to the kind of lightest commercial use that we have. This is C1 neighborhood commercial, which the proposed use of a gas station, which was, I guess, dislocated from their previous location on the south side of Highway 33, is looking at this site that you have in front of you on the map. So again, R2 to C1 neighborhood commercial, and the applicant is here. Any questions for me at this time?
No? Okay. All right. On the public hearing, if there are individuals in the audience that would like to speak on this particular issue? Is there? Okay. Please come forward. State your name.
Good evening. My name is Anita Trammell. And we currently have a house that we had purchased in totally rehab that we have for sale right now at the next corner at 12th and... Excuse me, 11th and Noble. And so our concern is, and this is the third house that we've taken from stinky nasty dirty houses over on the west side and made a nice home out of it. And we're trying to do that with more and more homes, if we can. I, you know, obviously, things were displaced when the highway was coming through, and everybody has to... Oh. Okay. Did you... You heard the first part that I said?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. But I guess our concern is, it's not my favorite thing to have that rezoned from residential to commercial. There is the car wash across the street. So I understand that's right there. But if there's... If that gets rezoned, is it going to kind of keep creeping in that way? That's one concern that I have. So there's some... The next... I believe it's the first two lots, and there's a house on one currently, if I'm not mistaken. And then the next one are some apartments. And then there's two houses, and ours being the one at the next corner. The other thing is, how's it going to affect the traffic at the end of... Kind of at the end of the bridge there and coming into the neighborhood? And how... What are the restrictions on how it looks, what the usage is, what the lighting is, signage, that kind of thing, too? The west side, I really think now that a lot of that junk along Noble, just over the bridge, is gone, could turn into a really nice neighborhood. And we don't want to see that go south on us because I think that it would be really nice. The east of the bridge, there's a lot of restrictions on that. And I'm for progress, but I just want to know... I don't... Perhaps I don't know enough about the plans on it, but I have concern about it, so...
All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Trammell, thank you. Is there anybody that has any questions of Ms. Trammell?
Yes. Not necessarily for Ms. Trammell, but feelings actually kind of echoing Mrs. Trammell that there are some concerns that I have with that. I think that, first off, we need this on the other side for economic development. It'll be good for the west side. It'll be good for the citizens there. There's no other place on the other side of town that can... That has, say, a convenience store that is easily accessed. So I really feel that this is something that needs to happen eventually. And when I say that, I think right now I have concerns, as Ms. Trammell does, as what this building is going to look like, what it's going to do, what there's going to be the fencing, lighting, what it's going to look like. I would feel more comfortable passing this when I personally get to see, along with the Planning Commission, exactly what is being proposed, the type of building, the type of structure, and all the other lighting, sound, abatement, fencing, what kind of traffic flow, where things are going to go. And that's where I feel right now where this needs to stay.
Mr. Long, I think you wanted to address the council.
My name is James Long. I own the property next door to theirs at 310 North 11th. I would share the same feelings as far as knowing that all of the blight is now gone from that area. So being able to see that, we have a clear slate and an opportunity to make things look nice again. However, I do feel that we have a need, just like Ed said, to be able to have that on the west side. My concern is not in order to... Whether or not we allow it, I personally feel like we should allow it. But I think that, as Ed stated, the plans need to be looked at. I would like to see that that area, since now we have an opportunity to... With new construction, to mimic our downtown district in order that any new construction there be of complete red brick or brick facade and not just 70% or 30% or whatever the covenances are now for brick structures. I think that it's my understanding that the lighting that's going to be on the bridge, we've been able to pick some period lighting. So if there's any lighting that's going to be done of parking lots, it should be done with period lighting. And if there's going to be any signs, I think signs should not be allowed to be large and overhead to throw light into residential yards and so forth. So if there's going to be any signage, it should have to remain low and not be seen from people's yards. And then I think that the right thing would be is some appropriate fencing so that if you have cars turning in or lots of traffic in and out of there, it's not obstructed. I mean, it's not being able to be visible from people's yards. So I'm for it. I just think that Planning Commission and... Or whatever the ordinances really need to be looked at as far as what it looks like and so forth. So that's my opinion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Long. Is there...
Yeah, I'm in complete agreement with James as well and Ed on this. And you, ma'am, on it because... And I was thinking about this earlier today. You put it perfect. I mean, we do have a clean slate in an area that literally... It's our western entrance to Guthrie, is what it is. And if we could do period-style brick, you know, your red brick or block or however it ends up shaking out where it mimics kind of downtown, I think it could be a big, big win. For the neighborhood's big-time win.
I feel that this building, being the very first, as we've said, it's a clean slate. This will set a precedent for all the other. And eventually, that corridor, the Noble corridor, will become commercialized. It may not be in our lifetime, but that will, once Guthrie grows, will completely be commercial. And the residents will eventually either drift back farther into the neighborhoods, but that corridor will be commercial. So we need to set a precedent now. Once we get a nice new shiny bridge all the way to the west side of town, we need to keep that. And now, as you said, now the blight is gone. Need to start picking up the west side.
Yeah. And again, in echoing what both you and James said, we have to have that type of store over there. There's no question.
Yes, we do.
Do we have an... Do we have some representative from the applicant?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Manjit Hare, and I ran 11 years in the west side, the store. And finally, ODOT barred me out out there. So I was trying, and I'm 100% agree with Mr. James. Like he's saying, it's going to be a nice, very, very nice building. And the sign is not going to be big. It's going to be a small one. And it's going to be a completely very, very nice design and the brick. Everything's going to be good. And anything else, it'd be like really, really good for... I mean, the Guthrie people really want me back there. And I receive every day like hundreds called. I mean, the west side don't have any stores. A lot of older folks have to walk in, to, I mean, go on fire, to catch a trolley. And they're really, really hoping.
Mr. Hare, were any of those things identified when you made application through the Planning Commission? All the specifics of what you're proposing, the type of structure, the building material, the signage, the lighting? All of those things were...
Yeah, everything will be really good.
Yeah, but with...
No. Were they identified when you made your application through the Planning Committee Commission? And a public hearing was... Cody, correct what public hearing was associated with that? Was... Were any of those things identified and placed in writing to the Planning Commission?
No, we can give them writing where they want it.
Okay.
Would you be willing to have us table and come back and address those issues and see what we can do before it comes back to council, before that rezoning takes place?
Sure, sure. No problem.
You really need this to be...
We need you down there.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
We definitely want this to happen, but we're trying... We need to protect Guthrie.
We need something in writing.
Really, yes, I'm willing to help anything for Guthrie.
I think it should be joint. I think this needs to be...
I think the sentiment here is that we've got an opportunity to make things better for everybody.
Everybody, yeah.
But we need to have some specific definition of that opportunity. And...
Yeah, I wanted to ask him if it would be possible to bring your building plans back to the planning department?
Sure, sure, we will.
And see the building plans and so that we could make specific requests and recommendations at that time. Because I personally, for the citizens of the west side, do not want to change it to C1 or to commercial until I've seen what you propose.
Sure, sure, we will. Absolutely.
Make sure that it fits our guidelines.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
So any other questions of Mr. Hare?
No, I think it's a good thing that you're doing. And we just, again, we want to make sure that it's a big, big compliment, and I know it will be, to the west side.
Yes, and we will do everything the way the city wanted, the ways I will do everything.
Okay. I'm going to table this item from our council until you bring the specifics of your construction, lighting, and items that we have discussed here to the appropriate planning department of the city. And then that'll be... And that'll come back to the council from there.
Deal with Cody, and he and I will sit down with you at a meeting, so...
Sure.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, item number five. We need to table it all, so...
Or we don't want to talk about that at all?
No. Oh, okay. So the... Item number four, then, will continue to the next council meeting. Does that give you enough time to do that, two weeks?
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to table for... Until the next council meeting, item number four. Any other discussion? Submit your vote. Unanimous, all those present, to table until the next council meeting, item number four. Item number five.
Yeah, I'd like to... I mean, we can't discuss this thing, huh?
Well, the attorney for the applicant has a health issue with a child and has requested it be continued for two weeks, is my understanding. So I think, in fairness, probably ought to have them here for full discussion. So I need a motion to continue.
Okay. So I need a motion to table this.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? Okay. Submit your vote, please. See the vote? Unanimous to table item number five until the next council meeting. Item number six, Discussion of Possible Action of Ordinance Number 3286, Health and Safety of City of Guthrie Ordinance and Declaring an Emergency. Staff comments?
Yeah, we have put together a proposal for you guys for emergency services. Our current ordinance, probably written back several decades ago, doesn't necessarily reflect the current policies and procedures. And it also doesn't reflect the current facilities that we have within the city of Guthrie. So we've updated them to make it reflect current policies and procedures. And we weren't happy to answer any questions. You guys have any?
I think you're all happy with the way you've moved it, or both are chiefs.
Chiefs, you have any comments?
Yeah, it's... We've spent a lot of time between Bruce and I going over it and cleaning things up. We think it's a pretty good go-down.
We have given it over to Mercy Hospital to review also. They have no issues.
Okay. All right. Good. Obviously, they're a significant partner in this. So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the ordinance. Any other discussion? Submit your vote, please.
All votes, Ren.
See the votes? Unanimous approval to... Of that ordinance, 3286. Item number seven.
There's an emergency clause.
Oh, I'm sorry. And the emergency clause.
I'll make a motion for we put the emergency clause on.
Second.
Any discussion on the emergency clause? Submit your vote.
All votes, Ren.
See the vote. Unanimous approval of the emergency clause also. Item number seven, Discussion and Possible Action on Proposal for a research project, a research proposal conducted by Oklahoma State University on traveler's profile and destination image study. Staff?
Yeah. When the CVB was taken internal to the city of Guthrie, began to have conversations about what is a tourist? What does a tourist look like? What does a tourist do once they get into our community? We were wanting to take that information from those questions and see if we can't develop some information we can start making decisions off of when utilizing the hotel motel tax that we collect on a monthly basis from those hotels and motels within the city of Guthrie. What we want to find out more than anything else is who's coming, when they're coming, and why they're coming. And it will help us not only this year, but in future years if we want to continue to do this type of research to figure out if we're actually being effective in the area of tourism development. So in order to set a baseline and for us to know exactly who's coming to Guthrie and at what point in time they're coming to Guthrie, we'd like to enter into contract with Oklahoma State University and their hospitality department in order to study all of those items. The cost of the study, I think they put on there, is $29,000 and some change. But because we are an agency of the state of Oklahoma, they're willing to waive the $9,000 and change in order to make that $20,000. We do have the ability to pay for that out of this year's budget based upon excess revenues and actually, yeah, that are coming in, and also admin fees that we've collected over the years through the hospitality tax. So with all that being said, we'd be more happy to answer any questions.
So the funding of this is through the CVB, the hospitality? Hotel motel tax?
Yeah, on the admin side, yep.
All right. And when was the last study conducted similar to this? Has there been?
There has not been. There was a study concerning monies that came from excess revenues that... From Mumford and Sons. But those were about utilization of what is downtown to look like going forward. And there were several scenarios about the utilization of those funds all the way from First Street to what we'll be going... Making an application for to TAP grant here in a couple of weeks. But there's nothing that's ever been studied about who's coming to town, when they're coming to town, so...
And this survey timeframe?
Over the next year, we're going to go through every one of our events and also do some rande... Random people on the street type of surveys throughout the entire year. So once we go through an entire cycle of tourism events and activities, we'll come back and give you guys that data that was collected from all those surveys and also the additional data that they have per the OSU Hospitality Department.
So, and they're doing focus groups? They're doing face-to-face surveys? They're doing electronic surveys?
Correct. All the above.
I think it's a good deal.
I'm just going to ask, because I had one merchant ask me if we couldn't just get the information from the credit card receipts.
Not necessarily. What we're going to do is we're actually going to go back to more than just one retail business. We're going to go through multiple ones. And I think there's multiple retail establishments, including merchandise to restaurants that will be able to work through their SIC codes to bring back information regarding, once people are into town, where are they shopping and how does that affects our local businesses? So we're going to do that comprehensively across the board.
I think it could be extremely valuable for our community. Yep. I'll entertain a motion to accept this. Go ahead with this contract.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Submit your votes, please.
All votes, Ren.
See the votes? We have a four... Five to one... Five to one vote passes to go ahead and accept the hospitality and tourist research proposal with Oklahoma State University. Item number eight, Discussion of Possible Action on Lease Agreement with the Campbell Construction Company. Staff comments? Anything?
Jim, I'll just speak to this.
This is TJ Campbell. They came to us a couple of weeks ago, and they've asked to lease the same eight acres that we leased to do it construction about a year ago. It's part of the 80 acres that we just recently leased to Billy Longnecker. And he has agreed to let them use that eight acres as long as they construct fence. And so everything is in the contract.
So this is a time... This is a short-term contract?
Uh-huh. At least six months.
All right. Good.
So is it just to store their machinery and stuff? That's all they're looking for?
Yeah, they want to use it for a lay-down yard. They're doing a project with ODOT.
I'm motioning to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, Ren.
See the votes? Unanimous approval to go ahead with that contract. Item number nine, Mayor's Nomination to the Historical Preservation Commission. We have three vacancies on the commission at the present time. And two of the vacancy openings require that individuals be landowners in the community. And the first nomination that I would have to fill that position is Mr. James Long, who has been a member of that Historic Preservation Commission in the past. And so I would like to submit his name as the nominee for that position.
I'm motioning.
Is there a second?
Sec.
Okay. Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Submit your vote. See the votes? Unanimous approval of Mr. Long on one of the positions on the historical preservation.
Hey, you at least look up and address. It's Mr. Long.
The second landowner nomination that I'd like to make is Carol Hersel, who owns properties here in Guthrie. Is... Has been involved with a number of things in the community and with the Historical Society. And I think has a significant focus on our historical district. I'd like to submit her name as the second position as a landowner on the Historical Preservation Committee.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Submit your vote, please. Let's see the votes. We have a three to three tie. It's not a majority. That one, that nomination...
We don't flip a coin like they do in the primaries?
No, no. We don't do that. We don't do that. That'll wait for another nomination. Okay. The nominee... The other position...
So what happens in a three to three tie? I'm unclear.
It's a not...
Doesn't prevail.
Okay. It's not unanimous or not a majority. Okay. The third position is a position identified as someone who has special talents for the historical preservation. And Mr. Patrick Kerr is a nominee. He's an architect, and he's relatively new to our community. Comes from Seattle, recently from Seattle. But I think has some great experience that he can bring from the northwest, Pacific Northwest. he can bring from the, from the northwest, Pacific Northwest. And obviously with the architectural degree, has some significant educational involvement too.
I like what you're saying, but I have a question. If he recently came, is there a requirement?
Two years.
For two years to have been here, like there is to be on the council? That's why I'm asking. I'm not, I think it sounds like he's got the skill we want, but I'm just wondering if there's a legal issue.
I have not seen anything that required two years.
I've not seen anything that required two years.
I'm not aware of anything.
Okay. I thought of that.
Good point, though. Any other discussion? All right. Submit your vote, please.
I don't know that we had a motion.
Oh, no we don't.
We have a motion.
Did I, did I miss the motion?
Yes.
Sorry. I will, I will return. Okay? I will accept the motion in a second on Mr. Kerr's.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? My mistake. Submit your vote, please.
All votes are in.
Unanimous, all present to have Mr. Kerr be the member of the historical preservation commission. Item number 10, one single position available on the planning commission. And my nomination is Ed French. He was nominated a year ago to fill Mr. Ed Long's, Ed Wood's position. And, and.
Ed Long.
Ed Long.
You got a brother, Dan.
I don't know.
I make a motion to approve.
I don't know where that came from. There's been a motion to accept that nomination. Is there a second?
No, can I make another motion too? Or I need to wait till this one's done?
You need to wait till this one's done.
Okay. Motion and second.
Anita, second.
Second.
Is there a second? Further discussion?
No.
Okay. Submit your vote, please.
All votes are in.
See the votes? It's a three to three tie, so that nomination does not go forward. Okay? Item number 11.
Listen, may I have a suggestion for nomination?
I'd like to nominate James Long for that.
Well, you don't, it's, it's the mayor's nomination.
Well, his name's on there.
Well, it's the mayor's nomination.
Then I'll have to come back with the nomination and be confirmed.
City manager report.
No report. It's done.
Okay. Comments by members of the city council? Councilman Bothrowd.
I got nothing tonight. I'm happy that the west side is starting to get back in to some kind of normalcy and I'm looking forward to the future on that.
That's it for me.
That's what I wanted to say is.
Thomas.
Thank the, the council for sticking up for the west side. I didn't have to say a word through that and I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Page.
Well, I'd like to say what Z did. I'm glad we have supporters for our ward. Thank you.
Councilman Taylor?
I agree on that. I second that too. I think it's a great idea and it's going to be fantastic that it's all cleaned up over there. And I see the utility lines are going in, so they're getting things moving. Maybe we'll get the bridge under construction. Hopefully they'll do that before they run out of money. And also thank staff for all the work they do, that include all of you guys. So, and 89ers is not that far away either, so, you know, be ready.
Councilman Wood?
Well, I also agree that, think the west side is coming along and it's looking much better and it's going to be a great entrance coming from the west into Guthrie. Glad the weather's breaking and it's nice outside now and everybody have a great, safe spring break.
Okay. I don't know who is responsible for putting the little gnomes up on telephone poles.
Randall did it.
I guess our attorney has done that. I believe they're hand-painted gnomes that, that are, they're very, very interesting. And, and another beautification project. Also, congratulations to all of the city. We have been recognized yet again as a, as a tree city for, for this past year by the Arbor Day Foundation. We are one of, one of just a few cities in, in Oklahoma. I think there's about 3,000 or so across the country, but we're one of, of a distinct group for things that we do with our forestry program. So congratulations to the staff for, and our, and our committee for making those things happen. Item number 13, we, we have, have no need to go to an executive session. I'll entertain a motion to move to, to move to the.
Do you have Bruce's walking papers with you or how does that work?
The approval of the, of the new contract that had been submitted to all, all of the councilmen.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to accept that contract that was presented to us. And is there any further discussion? Submit your vote, please.
All votes are in.
See the votes? Unanimous by even one who isn't here. I guess that was, I guess mental telepathy did that for Congressman John Wood. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for your attendance. All right, Bruce.